All right. Good evening. Thank you for joining us tonight. My name is Christine Cook. I am part of the Utah Education Debate Coalition. And tonight, we are continuing our series for the Utah State Board of Education General Election Debate Series in 2020. For those who missed it last week, we actually held a very similar debate for District 12. This Thursday, we are hosting one for District 3. Tonight, we have candidates for District 11. So we have Tony Zani and Natalie Klein. So thank you for participating with us tonight. Our format for tonight is similar to the others. So we will actually start with opening statements, move to moderator questions, audience questions, and then we will have closing statements. For anyone who is interested in participating as an audience member, you can actually submit questions via YouTube or other social media platforms that we have. So prior to this, we actually did a virtual coin flip. And Tony won and decided to go second. So we will start with Natalie with opening statements.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you for having me. My name is Natalie Klein. I am a concerned mother and grandmother and citizen who has been following issues that affect faith, family, and freedom for the last decade. My advocacy work has taken me to the United Nations several times, where I have learned and witnessed for myself of the intense political pressure exerted on global policymakers by a small vocal minority to pass resolutions that severely undermine the traditional family and the role of parents and religious freedom. Thankfully, most UN resolutions are not adopted by the US Constitution and thankfully, this is because they strike right at the heart of our Constitution and weaken the very structures of our society that make our country strong and prosperous, namely the natural family, the free market economy, and our religious and educational institutions. But rather than giving up on their quest to radically transform our society, that vocal minority is now peddling their ideas directly to our children through the education system, through online learning modules, ideologically driven curriculum, assessments, programs, books, and school clubs. It is for this reason that parents must be given the final say on what is okay and what is not okay for their children. State law requires parents to be supported by a responsive educational system that guarantees client choice. But to have true choice, parents must also be given a voice. I am ready to help parents' voices be heard and to ensure that in the implementation of all policies, programs, and responsibilities, that the legislature, as well as the state, local, and charter school boards, remember that they are required to respect, protect, and further the interests of parents in their child's education, not the interests of so-called stakeholders. There are too many hands in the pot these days. The education bureaucracy, the unions, the ed tech industry, the globalists and special interest groups, all with differing motives, some well-intentioned, some not, but all playing a game of tug-of-war for our children's hearts and minds. Is it any wonder so many of our kids are struggling? Children belong to their parents, whose only motive is love. It's time parents reclaim their role as the primary decision-maker in their child's education. I am running to help parents do just that.
Natalie, thank you. We'll go to Tony.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Royce and Elizabeth, Christine, and the Sutherland Institute and the Hinckley Institute for putting this together. I think it's very important for voters to get to know the candidates. Ms. Klein, it's very nice to meet you, and I look forward to working with you. This has been a very challenging year for our teachers and families. And I've learned so much about the power of positive relationships and working together. I'm a teacher, and I know how hard this year has been to navigate. And I'm a father, and I understand firsthand the changing school models and expectations. We will get through this working together. I want to tell you a little bit more about me and why I'm running for the State Board of Education. I've been a teacher for 20 years, and I work as a literacy specialist in a high-needs elementary school. I have a bachelor's degree in education and a master's degree in school administration. I'm a National Board Certified Teacher, which is the highest level of certification for teachers. I'm a proud father and a proud Army veteran. I'm also an independent candidate. I'm totally focused on what's best for our children and our schools. So here's what I'll do while I'm on the State Board of Education. I'm going to focus on smaller classes to make sure our students get the attention they need. We need to recruit and retain great teachers. I'm a champion of parents' rights. I know our voices are important. We need to keep our children safe in schools and online. We need to eliminate the testing culture and focus on great teaching. We do need to listen and communicate. Families, educators, and the board, we need to work together. Open communication, working together, that's how we're going to provide a world-class education for Utah's children. I want every child to get a great education, and I want every school to be a great school. When I say "school choice," I mean every school is a great choice. Please visit my website. It's tonyzani.com. My phone number is there. Let's work together and create that world-class education system for our children. Let's make every school a great school.
Thank you. Thank you for those opening statements. We'll go to the first Debate Coalition question, and we'll go to Tony this time. And this question sort of builds on the opening statements. How does your personal experience qualify you to represent the residents in your district on the State Board of Education?
All right. Well, I'm a father and I'm a teacher. I very much understand the needs of parents. And because I'm a parent, I've navigated the school system. My son has been in public schools in Utah from kindergarten through 12th grade. I'm also a teacher. I have a degree in education. I have a master's degree in school administration. I've studied school law. I've studied school finance. I'm a career public servant. I spent 10 years in the Army. I know what it means to sacrifice, and I know what it means to serve. I'm proud of that service, and I'm proud that I'm a teacher. I'm proud that I serve my community. I'll be proud to serve our community on the State Board of Education.
Thank you. We'll go to Natalie.
Okay, well, like I said, for the last 10 years, I've been actively engaged in researching issues that threaten the institution of the family and our freedoms. And having gone to the United Nations several times in my work, I have heard firsthand the plans of those that are seeking to sexualize our children, confuse them about their gender, and undermine our constitutional republic. Their plans largely depend upon reaching our children through the schools. So this naturally led me to focus my attention on local education policy. I understand the lawmaking process. I've lobbied and testified for family-friendly legislation for years now. Utah has some very good laws in place to protect children, promote strong morals and social values, and teach America's amazing history. And yet somehow, dangerous lesson plans continue to find their way into our schools, often through the online modules and teacher resource guides as well. These lesson plans have been created not by local leaders or teachers, but by special interest groups that seek to change our children's values, attitudes, and beliefs. I'm running to help root out that which is hurting children, weakening families, and unraveling the society, the fabric of our society.
Great. Thank you. So we'll drill down on this, the background and qualifications here just a little bit. So as you know, the State Board of Education distributes more than $4 billion per year. So what qualifies you specifically to manage this budget? And what accountability measures do you believe should be in place? Start with Natalie.
Okay. Well, the board is legally responsible with the distribution of funds. However, much of that money is spent on what is largely just how that much of that money is, how it's spent is much, excuse me, is largely decided by the legislature. Whenever the board is given leeway to make those decisions, I promise to do everything in my power to vote in a way that is fiscally responsible and that will return local control to the local districts. Every single school district looks different and has different needs. So I would rather the state spend less money expanding programs that require hiring more and more personnel to oversee the said programs, and instead, put as much money as possible on the WPU, give it to the local boards, and say, "How do you want to use that? Do you want to pay for instructional coaches? Do you want to pay for more buildings? Do you want to pay for more teachers in smaller class sizes?" Whatever it is, schools need more flexible funding and less restricted funding to meet their individual needs. Alpine School District, for example, has around 41 funding streams, but only four or five of those come without strings attached. It's time that we restore freedom in education by sending the money and the decision-making authority back to those at the local level.
Okay, thanks. You're right, Ms. Klein. About 92% of the money that comes into the State Board of Education is already earmarked by the state legislature, and most of that already goes through the WPU. There's also federal requirements of how money can be spent. I understand that. I've studied school finance. I work in a school, and I work at the district level, and I see how those budgets are already earmarked, and there are certain things we can spend on based on state and federal requirements. Principals and districts already have reams of accountability forms they have to complete. We need to be smart about that. We need to reduce the accountability and make it so that we're being smart about it and trust that our districts and our principals are spending money wisely. The State Board of Education has an army of accountants and auditors. There is no shortage of people making sure that our money is spent appropriately. In fact, we probably could reduce how much we're spending on that. We could probably save money with some less burdensome administrative requirements and focus that money on smaller classes. I've talked to so many teachers and so many parents, and the number one thing that they tell me is they want smaller classes. The class average in Utah is 28. The national average is 21. I'm a teacher. I can tell you that when you have a slightly smaller class, you can give more attention to the children that need it. When you can give more attention to the children that need it, you start building a world-class education system, and you start making every school a great school.
Thank you. Okay, Tony, we're going to stick with you. We're going to chat about teacher licensing. So teacher licensing has happened for the past few years, and there has been opposition and just a lot of controversy over this. So in your opinion, what are the purposes of teacher licensing? And what role does it play in licensing in the state?
Okay, I've been through this process multiple times. I have a Level 3 teaching license here in the state of Utah. A teaching license is a guarantee to the public that our children are being taught by highly qualified teachers. The State Board of Education is a gatekeeper to ensure that certain checks are in place. You, as the public, know that when I'm in front of your children teaching them, I've passed background checks. I have proper training. I have training in child safety. I've done training in child abuse prevention and human trafficking prevention. I've passed my praxis test so that you know that I'm a highly qualified teacher. This is a guarantee to the families of Utah that we're putting highly qualified teachers in front of our children. The board can also revoke licenses, and I think that should be very limited. But sometimes, teachers let their training lapse, or they commit a crime. And that's part of the board's responsibility to keep an eye on that, that we have highly qualified and good teachers in front of our children. The State Board plays a very important role in that guarantee to our families that every teacher is a good teacher and a qualified teacher.
Thank you. All right, Natalie, same question to you.
Okay, well, I agree with most of what Tony has said. And we do need qualified teachers in there, and there are things that the board does that absolutely help to ensure that. I think that when it comes to teacher licensing, the State Board should have a very broad perspective and allow the local people to dial down on the specificity. The local administrators know far better than the State Board the unique needs and challenges that their schools face. So one of the things I'm concerned about is that parents, that the schools feel accountable to the board and not to the parents. So we have we have a lot that I think the teachers need to definitely have. Sorry, I've lost my place.
So we can even, we can move on to another question, and we can circle back, or you can use some time on another.
Okay, that would be great.
Okay, let's do that. So Natalie, we'll actually start with you on this one. As both of you know, there are a lot of people who people and entities that influence education policy, sometimes with a lot of overlap and some tension. So who do you believe should be the primary driver of education policy? The State Board of Education, the state legislature, the governor, local school boards, someone else? So I'd love to hear from you on that. We'll start with you, Natalie.
Okay, did you want me to go?
Yeah.
Okay. So state laws say that parents are the primary driver of education policy and that the role of the education system in Utah is supposed to be secondary and supportive of parents. That is what true local control looks like. In the implementation of all policies, programs, responsibilities, the legislature and the governing boards are required to respect, protect, and further the interests of parents in their child's education. Education policy should allow for that, not restrain it. The more we undermine parents, the worse the outcome for children will be. But the more we empower parents, the greater the benefits for our children and the community. If parents can actually be involved and have say in what their children learn, they will be, and you will see accountability naturally flow. Parents are not involved much anymore because the education system is no longer responsive to them. It's time for parents to reclaim their role in the education of their children and for the education system to stop overstepping their bounds. The parents really need to have more say in what their children are being taught in the schools.
Great. Thank you so much. All right, Tony, we'll go to you on this one.
Okay, thanks. I think education policy is best when families and educators work together to create policy. Definitely, the state board and local boards should listen to families. We need to do a great job listening to parents, listening to families, and finding out the needs and what it is that we can do to clear the path so our teachers can do a great job. The State Board does fill an important responsibility of ensuring that every school is a great school and every child receives a world-class education. We need to provide consistent policies for licensing and standards, and we need to be responsible to our constituents and focus on the education needs of Utah. When we work together, we create the best policies. Our teachers are highly educated and highly trained in the field. They know what they're doing. And parents know what's best for their children. It's not either or. We have to work together. When we get the parents working with the teachers and the teachers and the board all together, then we create the best policies for our children, then we have the best education system, and then we have the best schools.
Great. Okay, Tony, we'll stay with you, and we're going to talk about state mandated assessments. So Utah has opt-out laws, that students don't necessarily have to take state-manded tests. This allows parents greater control in education, but it can also hamper the state's accountability systems. So how do you believe we should approach testing and accountability in Utah public schools?
Thanks, Christine. I think that's a great question. And the first part of that question is thinking about why so many families are opting out of testing. We need to eliminate the testing culture. And when I talk to parents and I talk to educators, there's two things I hear about. One is they find the testing to be demoralizing. It's not helpful to the students or the teachers, and they're not getting the information they need soon enough for it to be useful. And many teachers and many parents are concerned about how much money we're spending and how much data we're giving to these big testing companies. We need to eliminate the testing culture and get back to focusing on great teaching. Now, you asked about what are some alternatives? How about portfolios of student work? How about we have authentic writing and meaningful projects? That's a great indicator of what our students are doing and how they're performing. There are other things that the State Board already does that could be indicators of how a school is performing. We do stakeholder surveys of families and students and teachers. We take attendance. If a school has high rates of students being absent, that's an indicator. We can look at graduation rates, successive subgroups, our minorities, low-income and special-need students. And we can look at if students are succeeding and taking in advanced classes. These are all indicators that might indicate a school might need to change. First and foremost, let's eliminate the testing culture and get back to authentic work, authentic writing, and meaningful projects that really make it so that we have a great education system and not a great testing system.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go to Natalie on the same question.
Okay, I agree with Tony. I think our schools have become far too test-centric, and the children are not thriving in that environment. And the teachers, their hands are tied by being required to teach to a test instead of teach to the individual needs of the children in their classes. This also hampers, this accountability system to the tests always hampers parents being able to influence what is being taught because maybe the things that parents want taught are not, the teacher doesn't have time to teach because they have so much to cover in order to meet the requirements of the tests. The accountability system really needs to be changed so that teachers aren't put in a position where they have to choose between honoring the parents and what they want taught versus what the standards are requiring them to teach. Right now, the law says that they need to be responsive to the parents. But the accountability system creates a situation. There's actually consequences if they don't follow through with that, where they can even be put in turnaround status, which is a heavy consequence for schools. And so they usually fall in line with the board instead of what the parent wants, even though the law requires them to be responsive to the parent. I think when parents feel like their voice is no longer matter, they stop being involved, or they pull their children out. But when they are able to have their input heard and acted on, they'll be much happier, the parents, the children will be much happier, the teachers will be happier. And it's just a better way all the way around. You can just look at classes like choir and drama. Those kids thrive and love those classes because there aren't the accountability metrics tied to them.
Thank you. Okay, Natalie, we'll have you answer first on this next question. And this really centers around modernizing public education. And this has become even more relevant in the COVID-19 era with school closures and the shift to online schooling. How would you work to modernize public education, especially in light of this technology-driven economy and online schools? So we'll start with you.
Okay, so my first question is, who gets to define what a modern education looks like? Those that have grown up on technology are not more, but less literate than ever. Computers often compete directly with reading. Digital literacy does not result in increased vocabulary, memory capacity, analytical skills, or deep learning. Professional development eats up massive amounts of time and money for technology training that would be better spent training teachers how to implement effective lesson plans or coherent curriculum. Students also lose valuable learning time, always having to figure out the latest technology. Not to take away from the heroic efforts of our teachers, but we can all see how successful online school has been over the past six months. It's been a nightmare for most teachers and families. It's interesting that the late Steve Jobs once said about educational technology. He said, "I used to think that technology would help educate, but I've come to the inevitable conclusion that the problem is not one that technology can hope to solve." No amount of technology will make a dent. Kids will pick up on the technology quick enough. It doesn't need to be, nor should it be, the focal point of education. The fact that creators of big tech and their own children, or they send their own children to schools with no technology, should tell us something. Technology at schools should be optional, as too much technology makes kids miserable. And for some, it can be downright deadly, causing them to isolate from loved ones, become addicted, anxious, depressed, even suicidal. I say, let teachers resurrect the beautiful literature of the past. Let them bring back the math books that educated men, that educated men and women who could calculate themselves to the moon and back. And let them lead their students to rediscover America by delving deep into original source documents that will inspire their souls with the faith, courage, and feathritism they will need to save themselves and their country.
Thank you. Okay, Tony, to you.
Okay, so your question was about ensuring our students are prepared to succeed in an increasingly technology-driven economy, right?
Correct.
Right. We're experiencing that right now. I'm a teacher, and we've had so much training in the last six months in the best uses of technology. Now, technology is not a panacea. It's never going to, and nor should it ever replace actual textbooks. I'm a literacy specialist. I can tell you that the research is that children learn to read better from actual books in their hands. That said, we still need to make sure our children have access to technology. Now, we need to avoid the latest fad. I have seen that so many times in my career that the latest software comes around, and we're all expected to do it. That's not a good idea. But there are some simple things that can enhance our teaching. Programs like Seesaw and Flipgrid that integrate well with what teachers are already doing, and they make what we're doing better. We have Silicon Slopes right down the street, right here in Utah County. Those are great jobs. Those are jobs. That's a job I want my son to have. When my son graduates from high school this year, I hope he spends some time in the military, and I hope he goes to college. And then I hope he goes right down there to Silicon Slopes and gets a job. And it's through the coding that he's learning right now in his computer science classes that he's learning that, and he's getting the skills he's going to need to be successful in that economy. Technology should not replace our teaching. We need to avoid these latest fads and latest softwares and big companies trying to sell us things. Simple use of good technology to enhance our teaching and to enhance what our great teachers are already doing.
Thank you. So I will ask the final moderator question before we switch over to audience questions. Just a reminder to anyone watching to feel free to submit questions in the YouTube chat. So final question, we'll start with Tony. Even prior to the pandemic and the increased burden on teachers, Utah and a lot of other states were experiencing a teacher shortage. So in light of these trends, what should the State Board of Education do to help track and retain all the teachers?
Okay, that's a really good question. That's something we deal with a lot in the education world. I went into teaching to give back to my community. I think many teachers, they want to give back to their community, and they want to do great things for the children of Utah. This past spring, I conducted focus groups for the State Board of Education focused on the topic of recruiting and retaining teachers. And number one thing that came out of that, smaller classes. When teachers have smaller classes, they can be more successful by giving more attention to the children that need it. Right now, we have 50% of our teachers that quit in the first five years. We need to retain them by giving them better working conditions. Yes, competitive salaries are helpful, but most of us didn't get in this business to get rich. We got into this business to make a difference. Eliminate the testing culture, smaller classes, and elevate the profession. The State Board of Education is doing more things like honoring the teacher of the year, like they did last week with my friend John Arthur. We need to be honoring teachers when they earn their National Board certification. School board members need to be in schools honoring our teachers, honoring our students, elevating what they're doing, and making sure that when we can recruit and we can retain great teachers to keep them in front of our students, we're going to reduce the turnover. We're going to end the teacher shortage because we're making sure that our teachers are happy with the job they're doing.
Thank you. Natalie, to you.
Okay, for starters, I think we need to stop changing the standards so frequently. Our teachers finally get the one set of standards down, and then they change them again. In doing this, we can help make their jobs less complicated. Also, if the State Board would stop creating unnecessary programs, there would be more money to send to the local schools through the WPU. Then they could use those funds to even pay teachers more. Again, making the standards as broad as possible will give the teachers the autonomy they need to adjust their teaching to meet the differences, the different needs they find in every classroom. Teachers will excel in their work and enjoy much greater job satisfaction when they are free to use their creative genius rather than being tied to overly restrictive standards. We also need to reduce the reports. Teachers are required to fill out around 400 reports every year. That's ridiculous. Our teachers were trained to teach their favorite subjects. They didn't sign up to be mental health counselors. Let's not put that burden on them. They're already maxed out. In that same vein, teachers should not be expected to teach sensitive, controversial, or politically charged subjects. That job is for the parents. We also need to fix the accountability system so that it is helpful and not punitive. It should be a flashlight that brings clarity rather than being like a hammer that strikes fear into teachers and students alike. And lastly, we need to allow teachers to focus on teaching again, focusing on meeting the needs of their students and being responsive to parents. That will happen best when the bureaucracy gets out of the way and lets teachers be accountable to parents rather than to the board. Thank you.
Thank you to both of you for your thought process on this first half. So we are going to switch over to audience questions. And this first one is specifically for Natalie. So, a question about how you define the natural family. Would children from LGBTQ families or children who do not live with their parents fall into this definition, and would they count as a social distancing?
Okay, so the natural family, all the studies say that children do best when they come from a home, an intact home with a mother and a father. That's not to say that LGBT parents can't do a good job and aren't doing a good job. So, they need, children just do better. Can you repeat the rest of that question?
Sure. Would children from LGBTQ families or children who do not live with their parents fall into this definition?
Okay, so I think that's, I've answered the question, so.
Thank you. So we'll go to the next audience question, and this will be for both Toni and Natalie, and we'll start with Toni this time. So how much time would you commit to being in schools that you represent in your district?
As much as I can. Now, keeping in mind that the State Board of Education generally works two days per month, and they do more. I work full-time in a school right now, so I do have that full-time job as a literacy specialist. But I already am doing my best to be in schools, to communicate with parents and teachers. I want to be in schools in my district honoring our teachers, honoring our students, listening to them. I've been getting ahold of PTA members and arranging Zoom meetings with PTAs because I want to be in those schools, talking to the teachers and the families and the parents and the students that I represent to make sure that I'm doing the best job I can on the school board, and that the school board is a visible member of the community, communicating with the community, and being seen and visible so that we're taking back from the community to the school board to make decisions that clear the way for our families and our educators.
Thank you. Natalie, same question to you.
Okay, can you repeat that?
Sure. How much time would you commit to being in schools that you represent in your district?
Okay. Oh, I plan on spending as much time as I can, getting to know the local boards as well as the teachers in the different schools, and finding out what their needs are so that I can represent those at the board. I want to be an advocate for the teachers as well as for parents and families.
Okay, we'll start with Natalie on this next one, it's for both of you. What kind of working relationship are you committed to developing with local school board members?
Okay, it sounds similar to the last question. I've been in contact with some of them already and hope to spend more time with them, attending their board meetings, and communicating with them about the needs that they have in their individual districts so that I can be, so that I can be responsive to their needs and take those needs to the board.
Great. Toni?
It's all about the power of positive relationships. Getting out to those school board members, reaching out, communicating, being open and honest, listening to what they need, attending their meetings, talking to the superintendents of schools, talking to board members, finding out what they need from the State Board of Education to make it so that the LEA has the path cleared for them so that every kid is getting a great education and every school is a great school.
Toni, we'll start with you on this next audience question. What do you think about comprehensive sex education?
I think sex education in schools should be appropriate and factually accurate. So I guess I might need a bigger, better definition of what someone is considering comprehensive sex education. I would like to make sure that the education that we're giving our children in secondary health classes especially, that it's factual. And that's what we need to stick with. We're not making judgments about it, and we're not going into excessive detail and sexualizing our children. We need to keep to the facts and let our children know about it in appropriate situations in their secondary health classes.
Thank you. Natalie?
Okay, well, Utah's current health standards are almost an exact copy paste of the national sexuality health standards, which may or may not meet our, our community's standards. Sometimes these standards contain language that implies that everybody's doing it and that there is a way to do it safely. That's just not true. There are always emotional and often physical consequences attached to premature sexual debut. Encouraging young people irrespective of their sexual orientation to delay sex promotes equality of health for all youth. Additionally, there are principles that are universally transferable, which will benefit all students, including developing healthy relationships, setting boundaries, fewer lifetime partners, delay of sexual debut until emotionally and physically mature, and reserving sex for a lifetime faithful monotonous relationship with an uninfected partner. These principles constitute sound wisdom. That is why Utah law directs the State Board to make rules that stress the importance of abstinence from all sexual activity before marriage and fidelity after marriage, and to teach the harmful effects of pornography as it often entices youth to experiment with or engage in sex prematurely. Utah also requires that parental consent requirements are complied with as parents play a key role in supporting our youth. Many comprehensive sexuality education programs undermine this important relationship by advocating for services and support without parental knowledge outside the home. This is problematic. Ideally, this sensitive topic should be taught in-home by parents. But if it is taught in our schools, the focus should not be on sexual risk reduction that comprehensive sexuality education teaches, but rather on sexual risk avoidance.
Thank you. Natalie, we'll start with you on this audience question. So the Advisory Board to the State School Board is requesting that the board is anti-racist curriculum. How would you approach this?
Okay, I'm sorry, can you hear me now? I can't hear you.
Let's see. So the Advisory Board to the State School Board is requesting anti-racist curriculum. How would you approach this?
I'm sorry, I still have a hard time, you're cutting out. I don't know what's wrong with the connection.
Let's try this. Try muting. We'll try muting. Okay, so the Advisory Board to the State School Board is requesting that they implement anti-racist curricula based on a popular book by Ibram Kendi. How would you approach this? So, and I think we'll just have Natalie, maybe have you unmute now, so maybe the feedback won't be there anymore. And actually, we can start with Toni.
Are you hearing me? I'm, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, all right, do you want me to go ahead?
Let's start with Toni. Or not.
Okay, okay.
So if I understood the question correctly, it was about the anti-racism recommendation from the Advisory Committee to the State Board?
Correct.
Well, first and foremost, we have to read it. So if they're recommending something to the State Board, and they're recommending a certain curricula, the board members need to read it. They need to determine, is this appropriate? Is it helpful? Is it what we need? The second thing we need to consider is, is it harmful? Now, just because you have a preconceived notion about something doesn't mean any, that it's good or it's bad. And that's why I'm running as an independent. I'm not trying to walk in with preconceived notions. I want to look at it and find out if it's going to be beneficial. I do not tolerate racism. It has no place in our schools. We exist as an institution to educate every child that walks through our doors, regardless of their background, regardless of their family, regardless of their history. We love you all. We will teach everyone to the best of our ability. Now, we can have anti-racist training, and we can be patriotic and American, and we can do this without tearing anybody down. We can ensure that our teachers and that our children are against racism and still feel good about themselves and feel good about our country.
Great. Thank you. We will start with this one.
Okay, so racism, I agree, it's one of the worst characteristics, and it should be eliminated and opposed in the strongest possible way. However, we do, we have people trying to indoctrinate our children with our own Marxist critical race theory under the guise of anti-racism. Critical race theory or anti-racism, critical violence does nothing to solve racism. It only stokes the progress of a country. Racism is a real problem with real consequences. Teaching children revisionist history that destroys and ignores our progress made in this country is not helping. Neither is telling innocent children that because of their skin color they are somehow inherently biased or guilty for some atrocity committed by others. Children should be taught we are not judged by the color of our skin, but by the content of our character. All of our children should be taught honesty, kindness, hard work, self-control, personal responsibility, virtue, rather than indoctrinated in the comfort churches of diversity and exclusivity, whatever that means. If we hope to return to a more peaceful and civil society, we need to focus on that which denies rather than devices and will hold everyone to the same standard of decency and stability.
Okay, to Toni. First on this one, so how do you lower class sizes if there are no more classrooms or teachers to spread out the pupil count? Teachers are still off students. How do you achieve that?
Well, there's two methods to reducing class size. The first is making sure that we're making the best use of our funding and our money, that we're reducing bureaucracy and we're reducing the number of administrative jobs that just exist to meet state requirements or board requirements. That's funding that can go to districts, go to LEAs, and reduce class sizes. And yeah, you might need to build more school buildings. We are the lowest-funded state in the nation for per capita spending in education. If the national average, if the state that's the national average cut their spending by 40%, they'd be on with Utah. We spend just over $7,000 per child to educate our children. The national average is $12,000. The next lowest state is still $2,000 above us. The average class size in Utah is 28. The average in the United States is 21. We are going to have to increase our funding. We have to make that commitment. We have to make the commitment to increase our funding, increase the base that we have, and then make sure that we're using our money in the best, most efficient way possible so that it gets to the LEAs, it gets to the schools, and they can build the classrooms they need, hire the great teachers they need, and reduce our class sizes.
Thank you. Natalie, same question to you. How do we lower class sizes?
Well, one of the ways that we can do that is again by sending more of my money from the state level down to the local level so that I hire more teachers and spread the children out with smaller class sizes. As far as dealing with the current situation, there is, with the teacher shortage, it's hard to find more teachers right now and more classrooms, spread them out in, in order to social distance. So, I'm not really sure how you're supposed to, how we're supposed to solve that problem. It's one of these normal problems that everybody's grappling with.
Thank you. Final audience question before we switch to closing statements. And this deals with early childhood education. So, we'll actually start with you, Natalie. So, Utah has minimal preschool and full-day kindergarten available. What role should public schools play in early childhood education?
So I firmly believe that early childhood education should be left to parents. That's not to say that there aren't some good programs out there, and that could do a lot of good for a lot of students. But as far as making them compulsory, I think that that's the wrong approach, and I would not be fair about that.
Thank you. Toni?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
What role should public schools play in early childhood education?
Is that specific to preschool and kindergarten, or is that just a general question?
It is specific to preschool and full-day kindergarten.
Okay. We definitely should offer high-quality preschool that parents can take advantage of. There's a lot of research that shows that when children have the opportunity to go to a high-quality preschool, they will perform better and they will be better readers. I certainly would not require that, but we need to make it easily and readily available for our parents. Most states do have compulsory kindergarten. Now, in Utah, that kindergarten experience is optional. We should make that kindergarten experience as good as we can make it, and we should make it so that all of our students that are going to kindergarten and the parents that choose to send their children to kindergarten are getting a great experience, and they're getting those basic reading skills. There is a lot of research that shows that when children have a great teacher and great experience in preschool and kindergarten, they'll have a higher vocabulary, and they'll be better readers. They will be more successful for their whole lives. Now, I agree that in Utah, we should continue to make those optional, but we should make them very high-quality and very enticing so that it's something that we see as really good for our children if we choose to do that.
Okay, we will now switch to closing statements. Just as we did at the beginning, we'll start with Natalie for two minutes, and then we'll go to Toni.
All right, well, I'm grateful to have the chance to be here today. Sorry, it sounds like I have some interference on my end. But I'm very grateful for the chance to have this discussion with Toni and Christine. We are at a crossroads in education. Everything that once felt absolutely secure now feels like it was at best. Teachers and families are unsure what each new day will bring. Record numbers of families even chose to homeschool this year just to provide a sense of consistency to their children. Not only are schools on the brink, but our society looks that way too. It can be very discouraging at times. There is only one way to preserve our society and much about what the rising generation is taught in their homes and in our schools. Will parents reclaim their right to guide and direct their children's education? Or will they allow the stakeholders of education to win the tug-of-war going on for our children's heart and minds? Will teachers renew our children's hope in the future by teaching them miraculous stories of their American family? And the principles of liberty that will set them free so they can improve to the world once and for all? If taught and lived, correct principles will help them successfully usher in a new millennium of peace and prosperity, the life of which this nation has never yet experienced. After all, our children are a restoration generation, and it is up to us to give them wings to fly. Now is the time for decision. If you would like me to represent the great noble families of District 11 and lead any way to a better America, I would appreciate your votes this November. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. I really appreciated this opportunity tonight. I think it's so important this year, more than ever, for the families and the constituents of District 11 to know the candidates and who they're voting for for the State Board of Education. Ms. Klein, it's been very nice to meet you. I've really enjoyed talking to you, and I've enjoyed hearing your point of view. I just want to close by saying, I know we have great schools in Utah, and we have great teachers, and it's the job of the State Board of Education to clear the path. It's our job to work together with families, educators, the board, find out what the needs are, eliminate the testing culture. And I know reducing class sizes is going to be tough, but because it's tough, doesn't mean we don't do it. We have to We have to get in there. We have to roll up our sleeves and we have to find ways to do it. We have to be committed to doing it. In 2002, the state of Florida amended their constitution to put a cap on class sizes, 22 in elementary school and 25 in high school. If Florida did that 18 years ago, surely we can have the fortitude to do that as well. It's important. Parents want it, teachers want it. And we need, we really need to eliminate the teaching culture and let teachers focus on great teaching. I really want to hear from you. Please visit my website. It's tonyzani.com, Z-I-N-I. My phone number is on there. Text me, call me, please let me know. Send me an email. Open communication between you and the board, families and educators working together. That's how we create a world-class education for our children. That's how we make sure that school choice means every school is a great choice.
Thank you. Thank you once again to Toni and Natalie for participating into, in today's, uh, debate and for your patience with Zoom and technology, both really good sports about that. Uh, thank you to our virtual audience as well for the questions. Um, I know that there's a lot more that, um, wanted to be shared tonight. So just a reminder that this video can be found on the Hinkley Institute YouTube page as well as the Coalition's debate, um, debate page. So we look forward to seeing everyone for Thursday's debate with District 3 and we hope that you all have a good night. Thank you.